I will move on, committee. We're going to start off on the agenda with House Bill forty seventeen. And I will go ahead and open a public hearing on House Bill four zero one seven. And Tyler, could you give us a brief staff summary of the bill before us?
Of course, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, House Bill four zero one seven requires data brokers handling the personal information of Oregonians to register annually annually with the Department of Consumer and Business Services. It must make the information of all registrants available to the public on the agency's website. The registration is designed to support comprehensive data privacy legislation that is currently being developed by the Attorney General's Consumer Privacy Task Force. It is similar to data broker registration requirements that have been enacted in California and Vermont.
Thank you. And any amendments that we're talking about today as well?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have dash one amendments. These do replace the measure. And so I believe that folks will be testifying to the dash ones today.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So up first, I'd like to go ahead and call up the Attorney General, Ellen Rosenblum, please. Welcome. If you'd introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Holby, Vice Chairs Bonham and Graber, and members of the committee. My name is Ellen Rosenblum, and I'm the Attorney General for the state of Oregon. I had the chance to talk with you about this concept at an informational hearing last November. And I'm pleased to appear before you again, this time in support of House Bill four zero one seven. Since I first took office as Attorney General in two thousand and twelve, I have been pleased to partner together to advance crucially important privacy and security protections for children, students, seniors, and other consumers. I am proud of all that we've accomplished so far to keep Oregon at the forefront of ever-changing developments in the intersection of privacy and technology. From strengthening Oregon's data breach laws to ensuring that smart devices we use every day are equipped with reasonable security features, to protecting and limiting the use of K through twelve student personal information provided to educational technology companies throughout the school day. In recent years, consumers, advocates, and policymakers, and that's most of us, have become increasingly concerned about the vast amount of consumer data collected by companies and how this personal information gets sold, shared, and used. Most of us no longer feel we have control over our online privacy, and our feelings are borne out by reality. In June of twenty nineteen, we formed the Attorney General's Consumer Privacy Task Force to answer the growing call for comprehensive state consumer privacy legislation with the goal to give Oregon consumers more control over our personal information. This remarkable group of experts and advocates in the, on the task force now includes over one hundred participants from all over the country, many, of course, from Oregon. The task force efforts continue, and we plan to bring you a comprehensive consumer privacy bill in twenty twenty-three. Our goal is for a law that will provide Oregonians with key protections, like the right to know how our personal information is being used, the right to correct errors in the data, more control over how and whether our data is processed by a company, and special protections for children and minors. But in the meantime, House Bill forty seventeen is an important consumer protection and transparency bill that will shed some light on data brokers, a two hundred thirty-two billion-dollar industry that I hope you will agree has been operating under the radar for too long. This is not a task force bill, but we have worked closely with our group of stakeholders to develop the legislation and ensure that it is both workable for businesses and useful to consumers. The data broker registry we're proposing is a pretty simple tool that will help shed some light on how this unchecked industry is operating and how we can protect our digital privacy in doing so. Data brokers are companies you've likely never heard of that collect and sell information about you, who you are, what you buy, where you shop, what you click on, and what websites you visit. They know an awful lot about your birth date, your children's birthday, to where you live, where you work, where your kids and your grandkids go to school, your religion, your income, your education level, and even what size clothing you wear. They source all of these details about you, your life and your habits, and then they bundle it all up and they sell it, mainly to advertising companies, but also to insurance companies and even to members of the public. Most consumers would be shocked to know that companies like Spy Dialer, Swordfish AI, Loop Me Inc., or True Influence LLC know more about them than most of their neighbors do. Well, now it's our turn to know more about who's out there under the radar monetizing our personal information. It's one thing for a consumer to willingly turn over her personal information for a specific purpose. But the widespread sale of data, often done without consumers' knowledge, let alone our consent, gives data brokers broad latitude to basically do whatever they want with it. Consumers have no direct relationship with data brokers. And this industry continues to thrive, largely unregulated. As described in a recent Wired article, data on hundreds of millions of Americans' races, genders, ethnicities, religions, sexual orientations, political beliefs, internet searches, drug prescriptions, and GPS location histories, they're all for sale on the open market. And there are far too many advertisers, insurance firms, predatory loan companies, sometimes law enforcement agencies, scammers, and abusive domestic and foreign individuals who are willing to pay for it. On December seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, so after I spoke with you in November, the U.S. Senate Committee on Finance Subcommittee on Fiscal Responsibility and Economic Growth convened a hearing to bring to light a number of ongoing issues concerning data brokers. Committee members and witnesses outlined growing concerns with the indiscriminate sale of individuals' personal information and the potential consequences of that data falling into the wrong hands. So this is a national issue. Witnesses explained how even without stringing together full profiles, single pieces of various data can be equally effective to target an individual with the right amount of inference. A fellow named Justin Sherman, who's a research fellow who studies the data brokerage industry at Duke University, explained some of the common data inference scenarios that he's seen, including information belonging to U.S. military personnel, victims of intimate partner violence, and individuals with mental health conditions. We should indeed be very concerned about what this practice means for the most vulnerable members of our community. Data brokers have sold lists of addresses for domestic violence shelters, police officers and sheriffs' home addresses, people with gambling or substance use disorders, and consumers who might take out payday loans, including targeted minority groups. Irresponsible behavior by data brokers has included making available survivors' contact information to their offenders using personal information to enable racial and ethnic discrimination, enabling doxing behavior, and providing information on seniors who suffer from dementia. Of course, the data broker in, data broker industry includes some reputable companies that are crucial to the modern economy. But I hope we would all agree that when companies use our personal information for profit, it should be incumbent upon them to operate responsibly and with transparency, and that's what this bill is about. Certainly, that's not too much to ask when so much is at stake. The data broker registry we're proposing, as Mr. Larson, I believe, told you earlier, it's straightforward. It's modeled after similar programs already in operation in California and Vermont, where almost five hundred data brokers have already registered. Our proposal will require these companies to register with DCBS, the Department of Consumer and Business Services, and pay a fee in an amount that will support the program. The data broker must provide contact and other business information that will be posted on a public-facing website hosted by DCBS. Consumers will be able to use the registry to contact data brokers directly for the first time and ask what information the broker has on them, and request that the broker no longer sell their personal information, called opting out. And when Oregon adopts a comprehensive privacy law, this registry will be a valuable resource for consumers to assert their rights and for the Oregon Department of Justice to advocate for consumers. So thank you for this opportunity to advocate for this relatively simple but very important bill that will help protect our privacy, yours, mine, and all Oregonians. I am joined today by my Legislative Director Kimberly McCullough, who's going to share some more detailed information about the bill and answer any technical questions that you may have. Thank you so much, Chair Holby, and members of the committee.
Thank you, Attorney General Ellen Rosenblum, for that introduction. And I think we'll just go straight to Kimberly McCullough. If you'd introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chair Holby, Vice Chairs Bonham and Graber, and members of the committee. My name is Kimberly McCullough. I am the Legislative Director at the Oregon Department of Justice. I'm going to run through just a few technical aspects of the bill, but first I want to sincerely thank the incredible group of experts and advocates who helped us with this bill. It has been a truly collaborative process among a very large group of stakeholders. It's a very busy and vocal group, and we appreciate all of them. As we get started here, please do refer to the dash one amendments. That is, as Tyler said, the latest version of the bill. I have also submitted an FAQ into the record that explains the bill's components, including several fact scenarios that explain how the bill will operate and who it applies to, and also some descriptions of a few fairly minor amendments that we will need to work into a dash two amendment. As the Attorney General explained, this bill applies to business entities that do not have a direct relationship with residents of Oregon and that collect and sell or license our personal data. So what data are we talking about? We've defined the scope of data in this bill as brokered personal data. We use this specific term as opposed to just saying personal data to be very clear that this definition only applies to this law. That's actually very important because defining what's included in personal data is very complex, and these definitions need to be different depending on what is regulated. In this particular bill, brokered personal data is data that identifies or can be reasonably associated with us. That does not include de-identified data. It also does not include aggregated data. So this is data that can come back. It can be connected directly to us. So who has to register? It applies to business entities who collect and sell or license our brokered personal data, but it does not apply to entities that have a direct relationship with us. So there's some examples of that in the, in the legislation, and that, that could be a business and its customers, a business and an individual it has a contractual relationship with, employees and employers, and so on. DCBS does have rulemaking authority to expand this list. We really like the opportunity to have the ability to be a little bit nimble, so if we do find out of a certain, certain scenario that we want to add, we will be able to do that in rulemaking. And I also want to just note that we're going to be adding a provision in an amendment to make it very clear that a data broker is not a business entity that is performing services for or acting on behalf of, or as an agent of, a business entity that has a direct relationship with the resident individual. A number of times, folks have, businesses have agents that act on their behalf. And in that circumstance, they, if, if there's a direct relationship, it, it transfers over. We've also exempted entities that are regulated by the Fair Credit Reporting Act and the Graham Leach-Bliley Act. These are both federal laws that protect consumers. They apply to consumer reporting agencies, credit bureaus, medical information companies, tenant screening companies, insurance companies, financial institutions. These federal laws provide, protect our privacy in a number of ways and also require transparency, similar to what we're doing for these unregulated entities here. We've also built in exemptions for a number of activities that we do not consider to be data brokering. For example, providing a business or professional directory, health and safety alerts, information that's available for government records or directory assistance. We also have excluded activities that involve the distribution of media, such as newspapers and periodicals and more. We've also made it clear that a one-time sale of assets, so if you sell your business, for example, is, that is not included here. So those are the details that I wanted to describe, and as I said, there's a lot more information than the FAQ. Happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you so much.
Great. I think I'll, thank you very much for that testimony. Does anyone have questions for the Attorney General or the Department of Justice? Before we move on. Thank you. I think this is a pretty straightforward bill, not overly complex compared to what it could be if it was a complete data privacy bill, as I have participated in some of those work groups. So I really commend you for this step forward, and thank you very much for your testimony today.
Thank you so much.
So with that, I'm going to go on to Christina Glabas. Probably pronounced that incorrectly, but. So you are on mute. If you want to hit the mute button, there you go. Welcome.
Oh, thank you so much. Chair Holby and members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Christina Glabas, and I'm the owner and founder of Gazelle Consulting. We're HIPAA compliance and data privacy consulting firm in Portland. We work with a variety of different businesses to help them develop privacy and security programs. So I've seen firsthand the challenges and successes that businesses have in safeguarding data and complying with new laws. Working with Kimberly on this bill and participating in the policy work group has been an honor. There's a real brain trust of individuals that provide input on this bill, some from privacy advocates, technologists, compliance specialists, and major technology companies. And this work could not come at a more important time as our society begins to recognize some of the existential impacts that this kind of data brokering has on children, the elderly, vulnerable, all of us. So I want to share a little bit about how the data ecosystem works and how data brokers fit into the shadowy economy. So first, an example, the data brokerage Axiom, which ranks as one of the largest in the industry, they collect five hundred million consumer, data about five hundred million, million individual consumers, including up to fifteen hundred different pieces of information per person and make an estimated of fifteen billion in revenue per year. So that's a lot of information that they're getting for free. So where do they get it from? They get it from the data subjects or the data creators? So if you're an individual, information that you put on social media or information that can turn up in public records is often included in data sets that data brokers use. But they also get information from data creators, so people who make the information, or who make the platforms that we use that where activity is tracked. So that can include telecom and mobile carriers, media platforms, retail and services, social media, researchers. Anybody that has a relationship with a data subject is creating data about them generally. So when the, the chain of custody and responsibility for this data really does well between first and second parties. But when you get into third and fourth parties, things start to slip away, and we really, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how this legislation works because we really do need a way to see what happens when data leaves trusted organizations. So when it leaves the data collectors, it goes to the data brokers. So data brokers collect and aggregate data about data subjects to sell to data buyers. They can collect information from public records, court records, motor vehicle cases, census data. And some of the biggest data brokers are some that we know and some that we don't know. Cambridge Analytica is on that list, Equifax, Oracle, they provide a lot of business solutions that have data marketplaces as a part of that service offering. Any data marketplace that you are hearing about may be brokering and selling data. As we, there, we're seeing that folks are trying to transition away from the term data broker to the term data marketplace. And that has some benefits because a marketplace may have the ability to collect consent directly from consumers. But it's also something that we need to keep an eye on because it's not all that different. So once the data is collected by the brokers, the data, the consumers, the data consumers come in. So the data consumers might contract with the brokers, and they'll go to them and say, there's this thing that we want to achieve. And the data brokers go to the aggregated data sets, and they can pull things like location ID, device ID, members of your family, images that relate to you, your social media, maybe some of your health information if they've been able to find that as a part of their data set. And then the broker delivers that aggregated snapshot back to the buyer, mapped to the list of names, you know, mobile IDs or similar. So there's a lot that goes on in there, and, and I think that the reach of this bill may, may go fairly far into, you know, regions that we don't have a lot of visibility into. I'm looking forward to that. For organizations that we can easily think of that might be impacted by this, we want to think, can they manage this? And I think they absolutely can. As a compliance consultant, I work, I've worked in this field for ten years now. And HIPAA originally came out in nineteen ninety-six, but was revised in twenty thirteen to include the omnibus rule, which meant that not only healthcare providers, but also all of their software vendors and other vendors had to be HIPAA compliant as well. And so that had a huge impact on the, on the industry. Suddenly, many businesses that had never had the responsibility of complying with a security framework had to figure out how they were going to go about, how they were going to go about that, and they, they, they did that. They did it well. I have the honor of witnessing nonprofits and social workers, for example, who have a huge skills mismatch between their work and data compliance. But they proved that even with limited resources, competing priorities, and huge challenges, businesses can succeed at complying with data protection laws. And although some businesses may be surprised to learn that their activities are considered brokering data, this bill will provide them an opportunity to make changes to their operations as needed, and that's okay. And it has been an honor to participate in the development and revisions to this bill. This is a fascinating field of technology, law, and business, and I deeply appreciate A.G. Rosenblum's support in making sure that Oregonians have the cutting-edge privacy legislation that protects consumers by demanding transparency from those who use and benefit from our data. A.G. Rosenblum, Kimberly McCullough, their team at the DOJ, and the team they have assembled for the Privacy Work Group, thank you all for your incredible work on this bill.
And thank you for your testimony, Christina Glabas. So up next, I have Pam Dixon.
Yes, hello. I apologize. My video just simply will not start. It's one of those technology days. So my apologies for that. I assume that you can hear me, so at least that's working.
Yes, we, we can. If you'd introduce yourself first for the record.
Thank you very much. Yes, I will. Good afternoon, Chair Holby, Vice Chairs Bonham and Graber, and members of the committee. I'm Pam Dixon, founder and executive director of the World Privacy Forum. I've lived in Oregon since two thousand and sixteen, when I resettled here actually from India. I do privacy and data governance work all over the world. One of the places that I've worked is in Vermont in regards to their data broker legislation. They had a wonderful two-day education session where they gathered all the stakeholders together, heard all of the positions, and then went on a very lengthy and deliberative process in regards to that legislation. Oregon has done something very, very similar here. It's been an excellent and deliberative process. All the stakeholders have been heard. And this legislation closely follows Vermont, which has had now several years to iron out the kinks and see where there might be any kind of issues. We've also seen the results from the Vermont law. So consumers have gotten a lot of great information from the Vermont Data Broker Registry. We ourselves use the Vermont Data Broker Registry to discover that Clearview AI was collecting the information of children by scanning their photographs online and then using that, those scans and that information to create profiles later used for facial recognition of minors without parental consent or even anyone knowing about it at all. The Data Broker Registry in Vermont surfaced that information and allowed Vermonters to know about Clearview AI doing this. And of course, it also allowed the Attorney General of that state to take action. Oregon needs the same kinds of protections. During the pandemic, one of the greatest concerns that we have had here is in regards to victims of domestic violence and other crimes such as stalking. These have become more pronounced, and there just appears to have been more difficulty during the pandemic in these regards. And unfortunately, data broker information is often utilized by abusers to further the crimes that have already been committed, or they may want to commit. It's a very serious problem. We've dealt with this problem for about twenty-five years as an organization, but we've never really seen anything like it. We believe that the Data Broker Registry in Oregon will really help vulnerable Oregonians and all Oregonians as they work to find out where their information is going. And for people with safety considerations such as victims of crime, victims of domestic violence, public figures, other sensitive groups, where there are genuine, true safety issues, this is absolutely critical. But beyond that, as we move into a very complex information economy, we need to know how our information is being bought and sold and traded and used when we don't necessarily have access to that information, and this is a very important incremental step toward doing that. I, I have done a lot of work on data brokering. I've testified about it before U.S. Congress, I believe, three or four times now. The latest was in two thousand and nineteen, just before the pandemic started. And one of the topics there was on the financial aspects of data brokering. And there is a very significant gray area in the U.S. regulatory regime that just simply leaves a hole when it regards to, in regards to businesses that do not have a direct relationship with consumers. Under the Fair Credit Reporting Act, we have a wonderful array of rights where we can challenge credit bureaus that have inaccurate information about us. But we cannot challenge data brokers that we don't even know have information about us, nor even know they exist. So I like this bill. I support this bill, and I, I encourage you to give this bill a thumbs up. I am very happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you so much for considering this. And I would like to also thank the Attorney General and the DOJ. They've been wonderful. They've assembled a very good group of experts, and it's been a very excellent conversation. Thank you so much.
And thank you for your testimony today. The next testifier I have up is Charlie Fisher.
Good afternoon, Chair Holby, members of the committee. My name is Charlie Fisher. I'm the State Director of Ospur, or a statewide grassroots public interest organization with thousands of members around the state. And we're also part of a relatively new coalition called the Stop the Debt Trap Alliance, which is a coalition of organizations representing diverse constituents across Oregon to promote laws and business practices that equitably serve the interest of all consumers, particularly communities of color and those with the lowest incomes. And so I'm here today on behalf of Ospur and Stop the Debt Trap Alliance in support of this bill, which we see as a small but important step in the right direction towards giving Oregonians control over their online personal information. Because, you know, as more of our daily life, our work, our commerce live online, there are proliferation, as has been described, of companies that are tracking, sharing, and selling literally thousands of data bits about us, often without express consent, and usually for the end purposes of simply trying to sell us more stuff. And it's really hard to fathom just how much information about everybody is out there, as has been described by the previous testifiers. But I want to draw your attention to just one particular example, and I would actually suggest, if you're interested in this topic, New York Times has done a lot of good reporting. But in two thousand and nineteen, they acquired a data set of location information of twelve million Americans, mostly from their phones. And so it contained fifty billion individual location pings from their phone. And with this information, they were able to identify, you know, numerous personal pieces of information about people, who they, where they lived, where they worked, where their kids went to school, be able to track their trips to their, their doctor, their psychiatrist, or, you know, just tons of information that in the hands of the wrong person could be really dangerous. And, you know, this is just one example of the really pervasive and often under the radar existence of these third-party data brokers that are sharing and selling our personal information. Now, you know, like I said, this is a first step. Ultimately, we really think that Oregonians should have the ability to control who has access to information like this, and more importantly, how it's used. And so we also have been part of the Consumer Privacy Task Force convened by Attorney General Rosenblum and the Department of Justice to craft comprehensive data privacy legislation, and looking forward to supporting that in the long session next year. But we really see this as a step in the right direction by requiring third-party data brokers to register with the state, which will be helpful in determining both the scope of data collection in Oregon, as well as give consumers information about what current. data collection in Oregon, as well as give consumers information about what current ability they have to opt out or otherwise control how those data brokers are using their data. Just one note, and I'll say, you know, I think this, the process that has led to this bill is a good one. It's a consensus-driven process, and we're supportive of this bill. I would urge you to at least monitor the enforcement mechanism in the future to see if there are tweaks needed in future sessions. It caps penalties at $10,000, which we think is unlikely to be a real deterrent to the big companies. They could potentially write it off as a cost of doing business. Now hopefully, and I think likely, many companies will still comply, and that's what we've seen in other states. But again, would just urge you to closely monitor the compliance to determine whether anything additional needs to be done in the future. But to close, we urge your support of this bill. Thanks for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. I have one question for anybody that can answer it. Just, Mr. Fisher, you prompted something in the back of my mind going, when it comes to geolocations from phones on individuals, how, I guess, immediate is that information available? Is it in real time so somebody could identify where you were at a given moment?
This is Pam Dixon, World Privacy Forum. That's a great question. It's going to depend on what kind of system the data broker is using. So in the past, like 25 years ago, when we started looking at this, you could purchase a big, thick catalog, about 12 inches thick on paper. Then it went to electronic lists that you could download. But now, and your question is very astute, what now you can do is you can just plug into an API, an interface, which allows you to download this data in either real time or near real time. It depends on how much you're willing to pay and what your data uses are. There are a lot of variables. But I am not able to speak directly to the geolocation data and if the geolocation data is being made available in real time. But what I can tell you is that geolocation data has become a prime piece of data during the pandemic. It has really risen in global prominence in use in very, very important, complex ecosystems such as public health, et cetera, et cetera. So it's a good question, and I think that we can safely assume that if it is not real time, it is near real time. Thank you.
Thank you for the answer. Not sure I like the answer, but I like to be informed. Representative Bonham, did you also have a question?
Yeah, thank you. I think I still saw Kimberly McCullough in the meeting. Kimberly, in your testimony, you mentioned directory assistance. And I just am curious if that is defined? If we know, is there a limiting parameter on what is available through directory assistance? Because I know many of my constituents, you know, we hear so much, the one common complaint about their data privacy period is that people have had access to their cell phone and they get targeted with direct text messaging or phone calls that they find to be a nuisance. And so I just get curious about what could be included in directory assistance.
Thank you, Representative Bonham and Chair Holby. The specific exemption for directory assistance ties it to any directory. It's directory assistance or directory information services on or behalf of a telecommunications carrier. And so it is limited just to those telecommunications carriers, excuse me, carriers that, for example, provide phone books and things like that. The question that you're raising is actually something that I had, we have not discussed specifically. And so I don't know if Pam or anyone else that's on the line has thought about this more, but I can at least tell you that that's what the exemption reads, but I'm happy to look into that a little bit more and consult with folks about it and get you an answer back.
I just intuitively, I think, you know, address, phone number.
Right.
That's normally what we see in the white pages, but I know that as the white pages have migrated online, that sometimes the information is, you know, spouse's name, children's names, ages of the people living, like it's gotten a lot more in-depth than what it was when it was in print and delivered to my doorstep. So thank you, I appreciate it.
This is Pam, Vice Chair Bonham. In regards to your question, that's a, it's such a simple question, but it leads to enormous complexities in terms of answers. But let me just touch on a few key points. One is that if there is information that has been designated as public information, there comes a First Amendment problem, which I will not speak to. I think Kimberly is really the right person to speak to that. But we have to be very, very cautious of those issues. So that does play into the conversation. Nevertheless, I do think that in regards to having this data, the same data that is available publicly, and then merging it with other data, this is what is really happening at data brokers. It's not just directory information, but it's all the public records plus all the inferential records that can come in about us. For example, there was a study, well, actually, we did the study. We wrote a report in 2014 called "The Scoring of America," and it's on our website. But what you'll see in it is a particular situation we found with a national association of insurance companies or insurers. And they utilized a lot of data broker information and compiled that with a lot of private sector information such as retail purchase histories and whatnot that is not public data. And they came up with a theoretical list that would be able to determine how much each person was costing the company. And this was all done with artificial intelligence and machine learning and all these complex techniques, and it was a little bit horrifying for us. But that's the, it's the merging of the information that's really, really problematic in the data broker landscape. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. And I'm going to go for our last question to Representative Bynum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to build off of your question in terms of, excuse me, data privacy with respect to these new, like, survey or tracking fobs, so air tags. And there was an article in the Wall Street Journal yesterday about if you have an Apple product and there is an air tag, I guess, attached to you in some way, shape, or form that you did not authorize, it will actually warn you and tell you about it. But if you are, if you don't have a relationship with Apple, they just added something, a new app that you could track these air tags with. I was wondering if, because a person has a relationship with Apple, if this was, if this law still protected them from their information being gathered and tracked and sold?
I think we would have Kimberly try to address that. This isn't the full-blown data privacy bill yet, but I'll let her go for that.
Thank you, Representative Bynum and Chair Holby. And for that question, and Chair Holby, I think that you sort of hit the nail on the head there, which is that this bill is limited. It only applies to data brokers. It does not apply to all of the folks that collect and use our information or that collect and sell our information. So it is limited to data brokers. They're the third parties, not the folks that have that direct relationship with us. Should we be concerned about the folks that have a direct relationship with us and what they do with that information? Yes, we should. And that is, that is why we will be coming back with our comprehensive privacy legislation next session that will not only provide you with transparency, but also say, this is what they can and can't do with your information without your consent, what type of consent they need, you know, what are your rights to know all of the different things that they're doing with your data, and a lot more of a regulatory scheme, whereas this is just about targeted at data brokers and just getting transparency around this particular segment. But it's a very good question and something we are also very concerned about.
Thank you. And I know that many of us, and especially you, Rep. Bynum, probably have a judicial eye on this sort of topic as well. And I know the Department of Justice would probably welcome any participation in that data privacy work group as it proceeds. If you want to join in with that, I'm sure the Attorney General or Kimberly would put you on the list. So with that...
Mr. Chair, apologies. We do have Amanda Dalton is also like to testify to this. We've got you muted now, Mr. Chair. I'm so sorry.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't see her on our sign-up list, but welcome, Amanda, if you are going to run us a little over time here, but proceed.
Thank you, Chair Holby, members of the committee. Amanda Dalton, I'm here on behalf of TechNet, and I will be, I will be brief. I think you've got a good glimpse of the conversations over the last couple of months. Really just want to echo a lot of what you've already heard, right? The Attorney General's team continues to run a pretty incredible process on a very complicated, complex topic. My client, TechNet, we are a national network of technology companies. We have been active in the Attorney General's Consumer Privacy Task Force. We really appreciate the opportunity for them to kind of open the conversation and listen to all sides of this discussion. We really have spent hours discussing almost every painful line of this very simple bill before you, including, I think, up until the wee hours of last night. Kimberly and Kate, for the Attorney General's team, have just done a top-notch job on this, and we appreciate all of their engagement with us at this detailed level. I'll just comment, as you've heard, the dash one's not quite there, but we're confident they're going to get there, and hopefully we get a final bill to you in the coming days. So just really appreciate being part of the conversation at the table.
Thank you. I appreciate your testimony. With that, Tyler, I'll check back with you. Is there anyone else signed up that I'm not seeing?
That is it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. I want to thank all the people that are working on this subject matter. I know it is very dense. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing on House Bill 4017.